Okay, good evening everybody. It's Wednesday, March 14th, 2018. It is 7:05 PM. We're in the Nashua North Boardroom. Tonight's meeting is a budget meeting. It is intended primarily for public comment. So I know, just briefly to talk about what our agenda tonight will be. There will be approximately, I honestly don't know how long it'll go, 45 minutes to an hour, a presentation by Dr. Mosley and Mr. Donovan reviewing the proposed superintendent's budget. After that, we'll open up the floor to public comment. And right now, that's all that's planned. So with that, oh, before we go into public comment, Mr. Donovan did give us or provide the board just now some answers to some questions, and I'll review with the public what those questions and answers were. Yes, Mr. Guarino?
Would you like me to take the roll?
Oh, please call the roll, thank you.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes?
Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond is not here. Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Hoensie?
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver?
I'm here.
Mr. Guarino is here. We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so Dr. Mosley, Mr. Donovan, I'm not really sure, but the floor is yours.
Good evening. So a couple of things. Part of what, you know, on January 31st, we put together a budget in terms of what the district needed. We're going to review this for the second time. I'll start off in terms of where we want to be, in terms of how we see the budget for FY '19, and where we, some of the needs of the district. So part of it has to do with where did we get or how did we come up with this budget? So part of it is that internally, we met with principals, we've met with teachers, administrators, got some feedback from parents and other stakeholders. And so coming to this proposal, we really want to make sure that there is a sense of stability, but also responsibility in terms of giving us students the services and the support they need to be successful. All right. So part of the, when I say the stability rests on a couple of tenants. And what I want to do is I like to talk around those tenants and to give the public and the board an opportunity to understand the why behind the budget. Part of what I've said many times in the board meetings and in subcommittee meetings is around supporting teachers and educators and making sure that they have a permanent, I would say, teaching home. Really, we want to make sure that we retract, attract, and retain highly qualified and talented teachers. Because of the way our salary scale has been structured over the last couple of years, it's no fault of anybody in this room, it's just, it is what it is, that many of our teachers that are halfway in their careers, between five to nine years, they're leaving us and going to other districts that are paying more and offering more. So we definitely want to attract teachers and to keep them. The other piece is that not only we want to attract them, but we want to bring a sense of stability in terms of, we don't want them to, or the teachers to be worried that their job is going to be cut, that there's something coming anew from myself or the board, and this budget really provides that stability. As we've talked about many times, we have a growing and changing demographic, demographics in our students, and our ELL population is growing in the district. This budget also reflects their needs and the support that they need in the classroom. It also supports, you know, as I talked a little bit about the retention piece, we're looking to keep a level, level service in terms of, we don't want to have any teacher reduction. We also, you know, no one's fault, want to make sure that we have equal number of paraprofessionals in our kindergarten classrooms. We're looking to restore the custodial positions that were reduced last year. The board recently voted to not support privatization, and this is, you know, one, I say, step forward in that. Last year, I believe there were 10 custodians reduced. This budget has three custodians that are going to be phased in, and, you know, we could certainly talk a little bit more about that phasing in later. And then finally, you know, I always say that this, that part of bringing stability is bringing peace and stability in a sense that people want to know where they're working next year. People want to know exactly where they're going to be employed. And I believe that this budget answered those questions, but also helps us move forward with our initiatives, strategic planning, looking at our special education, looking at some projects we have in the pipeline in terms of Brentwood. All of these factors are what I would consider bringing peace.
Okay, so I'll take over for a few slides before we return it back to Dr. Mosley. Just, I'll run through these first few pretty quick. The budget that was approved by the Board of Education last year was the $106,687. The city then receives that, they add the benefits, the FICR and the pension related to school employees, and that total was $36 million. They also turn around and pull out the contract reserves, those are the amounts we put together, but the negotiations have not happened yet or are still ongoing, so the city takes that, they put it on the balance sheet. When the contracts approved, they bring it back to the budget. So basically, if you look at the school budget per the city document at the end of last year, that was $141 million. So the overall budget increase, where we stand as of today, and this hasn't changed since we brought it forward January 31st, it was $106 last year. This proposed budget's $110, that's an increase of $3.642 million, or 3.41 percent. Okay, typically, when I give this presentation, I break out the budget into sort of two pieces. One is the salary, and one is the non-salary items. I think, as I've mentioned many times before, the salary part of the budget, this doesn't include benefits, but the salary part of the budget that the BOE approves is typically around 80 percent. So this number here, in the $84 million in '18 and the $87 million in this year, are both actually 79 percent. So 79 percent of the budget that we have in front of the Board of Education is salary or labor type accounts. And those accounts this year, at this point in time, have a 3.29 percent increase. This is a little detail on the types of salary accounts. As you can see, by far, the largest salary accounts are the full and part-time wages, which one would expect. That's where the significant increase in salaries is. Wages per day are a very small increase, that's for substitutes, et cetera. The severance is the same. Overtime's slightly higher. And then all the other labor accounts are things like longevity, additional hours, which is, a lot of that is summer school and work where teachers work outside of their contract, stipends, and then a negative amount in there is the account called attrition. So those all net, the increase in those accounts is $130,000. At this point, most of which is the additional hours, and most of those additional hours is based on special education costs related to their summer programs. Okay, the other piece, the other 21 percent of the budget are all the other non-labor costs, and there's an increase in those, though it's only 21 percent of the budget, it's a 3.87 percent increase in the budget as we stand now. Okay, so if we go back and we look at the budget by the line items, by the accounts, here are the ones that are, have significant increases. The first one, transportation, there's a $434,000 increase. $265,000 of that increase is the contract that we have in place, it's a four and a half percent increase over last year. And about $170,000, the other piece of that for the most part, excuse me, is we were previously able to charge three buses to the Title I grant because we had a school choice program. That school choice program is ending next year. It's been phased out over three or four years, so it's over, so obviously, we can't charge any buses to that program since it's not going to exist. We still do need the buses. Those buses weren't used just for the Title I students, they were also used for other students, so they, the buses are still needed, therefore, it's a transfer back to the operating budget. Out-of-district tuition, this is an account, we have a $200,000 increase. As I've mentioned before, we could certainly use more. Last year, the total in this account was about $5.4 to $5.5 million. So if there's an area in the budget that is a little bit budgeted lower, then it probably will turn out to be, it's certainly this account, in my opinion. Okay, pupil support services, that's an increase of $70,000. That's for the OT and PT services for our special education students, and that's projected to be, most of that's additional needs. The cost of the services has gone up slightly, maybe about 1 percent, but most of it is for more services required based on students' IEPs. Dues and memberships, that's up $26,000. That's basically two items we have in this budget. The membership to join the New Hampshire School Board Association, and also what's in there is assistant principals joining the principal association, the New Hampshire Principal Association. So those are about $10,000 and $16,000 combined, and that explains most of that. And the rentals, as many people are aware, we're moving from the current Brentwood site, which is our in-house out-of-district placement, which is up in Merrimack. It's in a facility which is, needs a lot of work, plus it's not in town, so we're working to move that back to Nashua. Hopefully, we'll be discussing that soon, but we put in a placeholder of $25,000 as an increase. Okay, legal is up $10,000, and that's simply because we've been spending a whole lot closer to $50,000 than we have to $40,000 the last couple of years. This is to bring us in line. We do have an agreement in place with Attorney Clausen, which is about $39,000, so we have to have a little bit of extra money in the legal account. There's always a few things that pop up during the year. Contracted services, this number looks quite high, but when you see the negatives on the next page when I go through, it's really, a lot of it has to do with the change in the way the IT budget is put together this year. The total IT budget is exactly the same as the total IT budget last year, it's just that they budgeted more things in services, i.e., we're putting in more, more items that we need contracted services for, like the points, for the wireless points and things. That gets charged to contracted services, and we're probably buying fewer actual computers themselves. So that's part of the reason why this is higher than you might expect. And then the HVAC maintenance is up $18,000. That's related to an existing contract. We added another school, Sunset Heights, which when it was completed, we added that to the maintenance program. So we have two outside vendors that do most of that maintenance. There's the increase of that. Okay, reductions. The computer hardware line, as I mentioned before, it's more of a swing in how the IT budget is, was put together this year. It's not that, it's not a real reduction in the hardware, it's simply we're buying fewer machines this year and spending more money in the services. The other contracted services, most of that is the $20,000 to do the certification process, the NEAS certification process, which is happening at the north school next year, I believe it's the south school this year. And the computer software line is less, about $50,000, and that's just some changes that they made to the software programs. They're changing out a couple, and I believe they're dropping one of the existing softwares. Okay, so then what we did is we sort of took a look at the costs and said, okay, of the new costs in the budget, which ones are related to basically increasing costs to keep the actual current level of service? So for example, as I mentioned before, the transportation contract, $265,000 of that is simply an increase in the contract, so that's that 265. The Brentwood rent, that's the placeholder we put in. We're moving the program, we're running the program exactly the same, but it's probably going to cost us $25,000 more in rent. The out-of-district tuition, as I mentioned before, we have $200,000 in there. I'd like to have more, but there's $200,000, that's lower than we spent last year at this point. Plan operations, equipment, that is simply equipment which is broken in closets and corners of the building, not being used, and we really just need to get new equipment. It's not adding any additional equipment. The small item here that I put in mainly because where, when we're buying textbooks now, we're buying fewer textbooks, and we're using online services and making copies of things online. And when you buy the textbooks, they give you the copyright to do that, but we're actually copying more, so the copy line's going up. We probably saved money on those books last year because we didn't have to buy as many, but now you're going to pay a little bit more each year to keep up with all the copies. Special education summer costs, $58,000, that is the increase, that equals what they spent last summer, and they're hoping to be able to maybe chip into that and reduce it slightly, but they spent, this $58,000 brings us into line with what we spent last summer. And the high school counselor, it says correct budget line. Basically, two years ago, the Board of Ed approved a high school counselor, but that was done very late in the year, it was done in June. We weren't able to find a counselor that late in the year for the school year to start in September. So we worked with a local provider, the youth council, and we hired a person, and that person works half-time at one school and half-time at the other. That was not budgeted correctly last year, therefore, the two high schools paid for it out of their allocation lines. This would be putting it back to where it was intended to originally. Worst-case scenario, it could still be paid by their allocation, but in fairness to them, I'd put it back in the budget. Okay, and costs shifter, excuse me, costs shifting to operating budget, that's the, it's actually three buses, it's not two buses. That's the Title I school transportation that I mentioned earlier. So that, those, that $169,000 was going to the grant and no longer is able to do that. Okay, restoring prior reductions. As Dr. Mosley mentioned, this budget has, there are actually nine custodian positions that were eliminated last year. This is restoring three of those nine. The restoring the assistant principals, remember, we talked earlier about the dues and memberships account? That's the amount that the assistant principals used to have, that is, that in their, excuse me, they used to have that membership, and we paid for it. A couple of years ago, we cut that out of the budget, so this is to put it back in. The sports revenue estimate, we, I know Ms. Jengris doesn't like me to call it pay-to-play, but basically, we charge students to play sports, assuming they're not on free and reduced lunch. And basically, we've been budgeting that the last couple of years at a certain amount, and this drops down what we, what the revenue was actually going to be. We've been estimating it too high, so it's based on what we've received the last couple of years. This is bringing, bringing that revenue number back into line. The communications director, this is an existing person who was full-time, was reduced to part-time, and this would take this person and move her back to a .75 person, or a three-quarters. And then to restore the other membership in the New Hampshire School Association, School Board Association, that's $10,000 in the budget. Do you want to speak to the new?
Couple of things. We are proposing a assistant director of HR. By far, I believe this is long overdue. I think HR would, could use the assistance, having this additional person. This is not a criticism to Ms. O'Gara or anyone in her department, but certainly, this department is understaffed and definitely would need the extra support. Excuse me. We talked a little bit about ELL teachers, and we saw a presentation by Mr. Chopa in terms of just adding two more teachers. We'll begin to, what I would consider, address some of the deficiencies in terms of services for ELL students. We also heard from teachers who were here at the high school that really expressed their experiences working with our ELL students, paraprofessionals for full-day kindergarten, you know, based on what we're seeing and what's happening in the district. Adding point, adding eight more paraprofessionals would certainly help, help in terms of equity, making sure that there is equity throughout the district for paraprofessionals to support our full-day kindergarten. By far, I think, and I would advocate that perhaps, you know, that .5 could go a little north. I know we're looking at reductions and the whole budget as a whole, but I truly believe that grant writer position is long overdue. If you find the right person, that person can bring in thousands of dollars, if not more, to really help support our budget. You know, I think, you know, talking with the mayor, I think there's an opportunity perhaps to develop a partnership with the city hall and the school district to kind of help support this position as well. But certainly, I believe that the district would benefit significantly from having a grant writer. It'll pay for itself, in my estimation, within the first year. So I just really believe in that position. School psychologists, we're looking to add one school psychologist. You know, one is a modest number. We can certainly benefit from, given our students, yes, our enrollment is going down, however, our needs of our kids and what they bring to the classroom in terms of trauma, social, emotional health has certainly gone up, and certainly, our students would benefit significantly from having an additional school psychologist. I don't know, but plan ops?
Yeah, and this last item is supply accounts, mainly the electrical and the plumbing. The items are just going up in price. We haven't, we haven't budgeted an increase in these accounts in the last three years, and this was just a way to get a little more money in those accounts as their supplies are running low. And this is just a summary of the types we just talked about. So the increasing costs is $639,000 of the $1.345 million increase. The cost shifting is $169,000. Restoring the reductions, $161,000. Additional, $364,000, and then the $12,000. So that's an increase of the $1.345 million. And that is the end of the presentation.
Thank you both, Dr. Mosley and Mr. Donovan. Ms. Van Twyver?
I have just a question. I must have missed it the first time around about the IT budget or the decrease. Let me get that paper. You said the cost of services, or contract services going up, which includes part of IT costs, right?
Yes.
What was that value? How much was that? And on page 11 of the slides on my paper, last year, under computer hardware, you said Was that their complete budget? That's not their complete?
No, that was just the hardware itself. So the hardware last year was $392,000, this year?
Okay, got that.
Only budgeted $267,000.
So what part of the contract services? Give me that figure again, please.
Yeah, the $110,000 of that $252,000 is, we're budgeting for more access points.
Okay, thank you.
So if you, in a sense, if you take the $125,000, so basically, he's moving about $110 of that $125,000 from equipment over to providing more access points at the schools.
Which includes hardware?
No, I mean, I think the cost, $110,000 is the cost to put in the access points throughout the school, so it's mostly cabling and the drops.
Thank you.
Did you have another question?
No, thank you.
Anybody else have a question for either Dr. Mosley or Mr. Donovan? Mr. Mosher, do you have a question for either Dr. Mosley or Mr. Donovan on their presentation?
No, I've been following it very carefully, and I find it should be right on.
Okay, all right. If I may maybe offer some explanation, what I'm, my understanding about the access points, I think when you say hardware, I would imagine it includes the physical box, the wireless router, and I don't know if that's what you think of. When I think of hardware, it's the CPU and the boxes, but just to, for commonality of terms, there is a box associated with an access point, it has a machine inside of it, it connects to the network.
Right.
Okay, so it?
Yep, that's why I asked.
Okay, okay. Okay, I have a couple of questions. So if we go, forgive me here. My concern is that we're budgeting enough money, we're putting enough money in the budget to support not only the salary increases we know about right now, namely, the teacher's contract, that's the one we have, and I think there was another one that was also resolved earlier in the year, so we know what those numbers are. But we still have several contracts that, some have started negotiations, some haven't started yet, so those are unknown dollars to us at that point. And I just, I'm concerned, because if I remember, if I'm looking at page six, which, maybe you could go there, Mr. Donovan? Thanks. So if we look at that dollar increase in terms of dollars, it's $2.783 million. Now, if I remember correctly, the teachers' union contract was $3.6 million, sorry, 3.6 percent, and was roughly $2.6 million. I mean, this is, four months ago, my numbers, you know, I'm, but I'm concerned that if this is all we've got here, then I'm concerned about the contracts that will kick in for next year that we may not have money for.
No, we have, we have more. Keep in mind, this year's, the contract with the teachers include, the first year is this year. That was budgeted in this year.
But that was only $1.9 million, but that was for all contracts, right?
Right, but the amount, we have more money in there, it's not, it doesn't show on that line. We do have reserves for contracts that we've yet to negotiate.
Okay.
There in the budget.
Ms. Hoensie?
Where in the budget would be, are you able to find that in the budget book?
51900.
51900.
So, look at the two-page commodity code budget. You know, it's the, this shortest form of the budget, probably the first budget thing.
Oh, yes, I know what sheet you mean.
That roll-up that you give us?
Yeah, it's, it's by the, it's by account.
Yep.
Or commodity, however you want to term it.
Another question, Ms. Hoensie, did you have a follow-up?
No.
Okay, so another question I had, and, and I know you've alluded to this in the past, and you just shared it with us again, and when we get to, I'm, I'm looking for the special ed page as we speak, so we kind of know where I'm headed. See if I can find it. Sorry.
Page nine.
Somehow, I knew you'd know where it was. Thanks. So, yes, around the out-of-district tuition. This number is to nemesis to us during the course of the year. I know in my two years on the finance committee, it was, it was never a bearer of good news.
Oh.
Okay. So, and I know, as you, as you mentioned, in 2018, we are actually going to spend closer to 5.5 million?
That's, yes.
That's projected, obviously. We haven't spent it yet, but we're on track for that. We budgeted 4.67, 4.69, so we're almost, you know, $700,000, budgeted less last year. We have to make it up somewhere else. So, my question is, and I'm sure you have a good reason, but if we know that our costs run this, project out, I mean, does, do you anticipate a reduction from this, our current spend rate this year of 5.5 to go down for next year, or do you expect it to be about the same?
I, I wouldn't expect it to go down.
Okay, thank, and thank you for answering it that way. So, my question is, if we have an anticipated cost of 5.5, which is pretty much our run rate now, why do we not really show that more overtly? I'll just say it that way.
Two, two answers to that. One is, we have a special revenue fund we can use to pick up some of that difference, and, and in the handout that I gave you, I spoke to that. So, let's say about 400,000 I could charge to the special revenue fund, but we would still, you know, we'd still be short about 300,000. Would I personally like to increase that line by 300,000? Would make my, make my life a lot easier, yes. But at this point, it was, we're at 3.41 percent. If I make it another 300,000, it'll be, you know, 3.8 percent, whatever. So, that's sort of part of the, part of the reasoning, and hoping that if I need, if I need to manage an account, that's the account I need to manage.
So, the special revenue fund is, and help me, is, I'll, I'll just let you explain it, I won't even try.
Yeah, it's, it's an account where students that come to our programs, our in-house programs, pay tuition for that. They're mostly special education-type programs that we have in-house, and they, some students come from other towns, there's probably about 15 of them, and they pay tuition. That goes into a special revenue fund. We can then use that to pay for the out-of-district tuition costs that are over our budget.
So, it's, is it an, a like kind of expense? For example, if this is inbound tuition, we can use it for outbound tuition?
Sure.
That there has to be that relationship, or can it be used in other places?
It can be used in any, out of, in any special education-type case.
Okay, so it's limited to the special ed world?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, you would like to have more money there, but you think you have at least half the offset in incoming revenue?
Right.
Okay, so 300K is really what you feel is the budget exposure as compared to, in other words, you have that 400 you can almost count on, but there's, we're about 300 short. Okay, thank you. Ms. Hoensie?
I just have a small question on page 12B, page one, under school board services. There's a line item 30, 53, 62, 8, and it says, "Contract services, $10,000 last year, and we have 10,000 this year." Is that the 10,000 that we used for the Supreme Court case for Ask Me? I mean, I, what contract services did the board use for 10,000? That's the amount that rings a bell in...
No, the, the, that court, that was charged to legal, that 10,000. But I'm not, what...
Well, I'm not seeing legal, because we have a legal services down below, and it says we have 40 going to 50,000 for the year. 40,000, I'm, 40,000 in 18 and 50,000 in 19, but above that, there's contract services. What does the board contract for if not legal?
Which pages?
12B, page one.
In the book, in the killer...
In this book.
I don't know, I'll have to look into that.
Thank you.
Any other board members? I'm sorry. Any other board, Mr. Mo, let me first ask Mr. Moser, or, do you have any questions?
Not at this moment.
Okay, I guess, and I'll just ask again, any other board members have a question for the administration? Okay, so I guess with that, why don't we open up for a public comment? Did you sign in? Okay, so let me get that sheet. We have one per, oh, sorry, if you...
Just sign on this one.
Oh, sorry.
So, we have two speakers standing here. Ms. Johnson, I'll introduce you.
Attendance is pretty low.
Yeah.
So, for this, at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the public comments section of our agenda. I have two names. Ms. Paula Johnson, please, please give us your address when you come up.
My name is Paula Johnson. I live at 15 West Bondry, right here in Ashawa. I've got a couple of concerns here, as I was looking through. I wanted to really print the budget book, but I guess I got the sample, because as I started printing last night, I had like 22 pages of staffing. I went, wow, that's a lot of staffing for the city. And so, then I found the budget process for the district. Couple of questions I have, I got more than a couple of questions. I never have a couple of questions in my life. Charlotte Avenue School. I noticed that Mr. Marku, president of the teachers' union, is listed there for 75,698. That's a lot of money. I know that there's an MOU that's in the negotiation, I know that. But I guess what bothers me here, maybe somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I doubt it. Oh, before I start on all this, I thought under the right-to-know law, when you have a member of the board that's not present here, they're supposed to state why they're not here, and where they are, and if anybody's present with them. Because I complained about that to corporation, Assistant Corporation Counsel, Dory Clark, because I know they do that at the Board of Alderman. You state where you are, why you're not here. Basically, all it says is in the right-to-know law. And if anybody's in the room with you, because you have to make sure nobody's influencing any of your votes or comments, because you're still part of the meeting, even though you're not here. So, I guess I'll send off a little note to her again about this, because let's be right the way we're supposed to be with the right-to-know law, make everything transparent. That's what the mayor ran on transparency, and that's what we should have, a lot of transparency. So, I guess, if you didn't know how to read a budget book, and you didn't know what was going on in the district, somebody would probably miss this, because pretty big increase in money from 2016 budget from 47,171, and the same thing in 2017. I couldn't find anything in 218, but in 19, that's like a 28,000, let's listen to this, 28,527 dollar increase, if I calculated that right. Now, that's a damn lot of money here. For most people who work on minimum wage, and the economy is start, starting to go. Now, and I guess what bothers me, and this is budgetary, he's sitting and representing the teachers' union in the negotiation table, but yet, he's employed by the city on this side of the table. We're paying him, we're paying him. No? No, then why would he be in a budget?
If, yeah, if I could speak to it before you go on on that...
Okay, please do, because I think this is really, has to do with, people would like to understand this on transparency.
Okay, in fiscal year...
Can I just interrupt just real quick, and you're going to explain? Part of what we can ask questions about people in the district, and we can clarify it, but Mr. Marku is not here.
He doesn't have to be here. He does not, he is a citizen, he is an employee of the district.
Excuse me one second. You asked a question, we are going to answer it as a district.
Mr. Donovan was going to answer it for me.
The one thing that we are going to do moving forward, that we are going to be respectful, and we're going to do it in a respectful way, where your questions will be answered, but no one's character will be denigrated, or who they're, they're associated with. Mr. Marku, as far as I'm concerned, is the representative of the teachers' union. He is a former teacher, he is a parent in this community, and he will be treated, whether he's here or not, with a level of dignity and respect.
And I didn't disrespect him.
And that, excuse me one second, I'm not, I'm not negotiating that, I'm informing you of that.
I didn't, no, I didn't disrespect him, I just asked the question.
So, we are going to answer your question. Excuse me one second. We're going to answer your question in a respectful way, but I want to be very clear that moving forward, we're not doing this here anymore. It stops. So, Mr. Donovan, would you be so kind to answer the citizen's question?
Excuse me, Mr. Donovan, before you answer that question, Mr. Mosley, I am a citizen of this city, and I expect the same respect. I just answered it, and I didn't say anything disrespectful of Mr. Marku. I just asked, how can he be representing the teachers' union and sitting at the same table as a teacher in the district? I never said anything disrespectful of him. I asked a question, because this is a question that would be asked, because you have him here on a line item for Charlotte Avenue School for 78,000. That's what I asked. I didn't say anything bad about him. I don't even know the man, and I'm not going to say anything. I'm asking a question about a line item. That's what I'm asking. I expect the respect from you, because, let me put it to you this way, you work for the district, you work for me. I pay your salary through my taxes, so respect goes a two-way street. All I did was ask the question, how can he work for the district and be the, the president of the teachers' union and be in a budget if he's not actually working for the district and his salary going up 28,000? When I sat on this board, and when I sat on the Board of Alderman, I would ask the same questions with respect, because this is called transparency, because people wouldn't understand, how can you hold a position and get paid by the city in the same instance? Now, if he's a president of the teachers' union, one would think, correct me if I'm wrong, that he would get paid by the teachers' union and not the city. That's what it would be. So, that's where the question is coming from. How can you represent the teachers' union, sit at the roundtable, and negotiate a contract, and be in a budget book as an employee of the city? That's not being disrespectful. Thank you. Mr. Donovan, I'll expect your answer. Thank you.
Okay, I can clear all this up very quickly, okay? In fiscal year 17, the budget book, Adam Marku was in the budget book at 44,770. That was his salary, he was a fifth-grade teacher. In fiscal year 18, you didn't see him in the budget, because he moved to become president of the union, so he wasn't in the budget. There was another teacher, her last name is Erda, she took his place. He's officially on a leave of absence. He gets two years officially as a leave of absence. So, he, so last year, we took him out, and we put in this, this teacher who was replacing him in the fifth grade. This year, when we, we made an error in the budget, okay? So, we put Erda, if you look at the, the detail, you'll notice Erda is in last year's column, there was a zero for her in this year's column. Adam was zero last year, he's 75,000 this year. So, the good news, the, the bad news is it was an error. Adam Marku should not be in the budget, he's not paid for by the school district. The good news to this budget is we can make an entry, it's actually 30,928, reducing the budget, because Erda will go in, Adam will go out. Adam was in at 75,000, Erda is in it, should be in at about 45,000. So, we can correct that. Adam is, we pay him through our payroll system, we bill the union every month, the union pays us. They pay us for his salary, they pay us for all his benefits. It's working out very clearly. So, there was simply an error in the budget this year, so we will correct that error as we move, move forward.
That was a simple explanation. We didn't have to go through all this, you know, back and forth. Now, why would we pay him, and then the teachers' union reimburse us? Why not just not pay him? Is it because we're holding a spy? I don't care if it's Mr. Marku or anybody, let's just get rid of names. The president of the teachers' union, is this, is this a regular thing that we hold their position, so they don't lose anything?
Per the contract for two years, I, I think it may be three, but I know it's at least two years. If an, into, a teacher becomes president of the union, then they hold all their benefits and things, things like that. It's in, it's in the contract.
It's in the contract. We don't get that in private sector, I'll tell you that much. Okay, attract, attract and retain educators. You know, I think we pay very well in this district, and people are going to go and move like they do in any job, and I don't think we should hold a carrot in front of them if they think it's time to leave. Accommodate the ESL, okay, ELL learners. Are we getting any federal dollars back on that? Or is this just the Fed said, you know, everybody has to bite the bullet on this?
We have a small grant related to that. Other than that, we don't get federal dollars.
Okay, but it's just like special ed. Special ed, the federal government said that we're going to pay you X amount of dollars. We never saw it, every year probably gets less and less. Yeah, that's what I talked about on Facebook, special ed, that time, when I got dumped on. And wasn't it a time when kids went to Title I that the parents had to bring them? I know my daughter, where we live, in our area, because they went to Led Street, they were in Title to Title I. I had to drive my daughter every day to Title I. There was no busing, back when she was, she's 27 now, but there was no busing. I'll tell you, it was the best program I had seen in the district, Title I, and it was part-time, and you know what was so nice? And the teachers said to us, they weren't beholden to a union, and they loved it. It was the best atmosphere I ever saw, and the whole time, my kids were in school. And my daughter learned so much in Title I, it was a blessing, and she had hearing difficulties. But it, it worked out very good, but I had to take her, it is still at the first church up on Main Street, because that's where I used to take my daughter every day to school.
Yeah, the kindergarten program's still up there.
Yeah, excellent, excellent program. I'll tell you, the best out of everything. Dues and membership subscriptions, 88,780. You know, that's a lot of money for, for taxpayers to have to foot the bill. You know, I think if, you know, assistant principals want to belong to it, maybe they should pay for it. They make enough money, I think they should pay for it. When you talk about an assistant HR person, we need it because the workload is so bad. Well, I work in the private sector, and my workload gets really bad. Well, I work in the private sector, and my workload gets really bad, and nobody says in my employment that we're going to put another person on because you work too hard. You know what they say? Suck it up, or find another job. That's what they say in private sector. A lot of people who've never worked in the private sector don't understand that, here's your job, this is what you have to do, and if you don't like it, there's the door, don't let it hit you on, you know what, on the way out. Same thing with the School Board Association. That's, you know, ten thousand dollars is ten thousand dollars. I think we have to find a way on how to reduce our costs here. I know it's hard to, to want to look to reduce, because everything's important. I sat in the seats, I understand what it's like. Special ed, every year we have more and more kids with special needs, we need more powers and the power professionals in the classroom. You know, aid of them, it's, it's a big pill to swallow. We talk about students, we need more psychiatrists, psychologists in the classroom, because we have more and more kids with problems. We do have parents for children, it's unfortunate that some parents don't want to take care of their kids. But, you know, you can't have a village to raise a child, you need parents to raise the kids. And somewhere along the line, people, taxpayers can't pay for all this anymore. You know, this year, we're having the reavow, because somehow some fell through the crack, I, I guess, you know, that we didn't do the reavow this year, and the costs are going to jump for us homeowners. What's the percentage? Maybe ten, because what's going, maybe people don't understand that one, you have to do a reavow. Your assessment goes up, your taxes go down. But when that assessment goes up, it's actually going to be more than if your property taxes go up, because if your house is assessed at two fifty-three and they're selling for three hundred thousand now, you're going to get hit up on that three hundred thousand. So, to ask the taxpayers to please take more and more out of their pocket, my husband hasn't had a raise in ten years. So we have to make do with what he makes, or we get another job. And the teachers get raises, and that, believe me, they're not poor on these. They don't work three hundred, what, fifty weeks out of the year, like most people do. They get about three months off, because of the fact of, with the, with the, off for the summer, the holidays, and the vacation weeks. So I would implore upon you all to please sit down, roll up your sleeves, and see where you can find some other reductions. I know it's not easy, I've had to do it, but you have to think about the people who are paying for this, and the chances are, we can't afford this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Van Twyver.
Thank you. Could I just get a clar- question here? The salary for the NTU president, he was paid forty-eight by the school and seventy-eight by the NTU?
Yeah, the NTU's paying him seventy-five.
Seventy-five, what were you paying him?
As a teacher, he was, back in seventeen, he was making about forty-five.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask the question about the salary jump from being a teacher to the NTU president.
Yes, so-
Was just for the record, because I didn't have my mic on. So, once again, it is, what, forty-eight to seventy-five?
Forty-five to seventy-five basis. Thirty thousand, he makes thirty thousand more as president than he did as a fifth-grade teacher.
That's a very nice increase, thank you.
Paid for by the union, though, not paid for by the taxpayers.
Don't get on the, always on the-
We have one other person, Dave Scolera. Could you please come forward, and please give us your address for the record?
Good evening, everyone. Dave Scolera, nineteen Bloomingvale Drive in Nashua. I'll stick to my notes, so I don't go off-topic. I have a junior at Nashua North, and an eighth grader at Penachuk. My wife and I have had an absolutely phenomenal experience in the Nashua School District. Administrators, teachers, coaches, all have exceeded our expectations. It hasn't, you couldn't say anything better about our experience in the Nashua schools. First, I also want to thank all of you for taking your time and your dedication to what your, you know, students. You also all don't get paid enough, so, just want to put that out there. Just a few points, and I think I'll be brief. First comment to the board is, I think we need to let Dr. Mosley and his administrators do their job. They have accountability to this board, but they can't be micromanaged by it. I, this is, you might find this funny, but I painstakingly watch almost every meeting. I travel a lot for work, so it fills up my time in a hotel room, watching the livestream, and a lot of the dialogue seems to be on micromanaging or administration, and I fear this budget process is only going to be adversely affected by it. So once again, I, I give you all great kudos for dedicating your, your lives to our students, but oversight and accountability are great, but micromanagement can sometimes be divisive, and I think we just want to keep that in mind as we move through this budget process. I'd also urge Dr. Mosley and the board to take a very bold step with the budget proposal to the mayor and the Board of Alderman. I understand the reality of the situation with budget constraints, but this city needs to know what the cost would be to adequately fund our schools. Submitting an alternative lower budget is simply just submitting a lower budget. If we put lower numbers out there, that's going to be taken by the Alderman and the mayor, and that's going to be what you're left with. I was scribbling notes throughout the process, and Mr. Donovan, thank you for the very clear description of the numbers. And if I look at the, just the added costs of personnel, bringing the custodians back in, and the new teacher resources, and the twelve thousand dollars of additional, I think it was plumbing, you know, that's five hundred and thirty-seven thousand of total adds, and that's, that brings the, the three point four one, even if we were to cut those, it would take the three point four one down to over two point nine percent still, which is still more than what the mayor's probably going to want. And I think we just have to say to the mayor, that's not enough to fund our schools. We need more. Our students are, are too important. So I know that's not an easy approach to take, I know that hasn't been the approach in the past, but I think we have to be really bold in saying, this is what it takes to fund, to fund our schools adequately. Just a couple more things, and I'll be done. I, I feel pretty passionately about the substitute situation need to be figured out. My two students that sit in classrooms have substitute, or have teachers that aren't there because of very legitimate reasons in most cases, and the amount of times that they don't have adequate teachers in class is just too much. There is not education going on when that's taking place, and we need to figure that out. Especially the twenty-day daily rate for long-term subs. If, for those that aren't aware, a, a teacher that goes in for a long-term sub that is covering for maternity leave or some other personal leave, these are certified teachers that interview for a position, in their first twenty days of consecutive employment, they're paid at a daily rate. These aren't, you know, college students that are filling in during the break, these are certified teachers that are probably prospective teachers in the district, that for the first twenty days, that's four weeks of employment, are getting paid the daily rate. They don't wait till day twenty-one before they start doing lesson plans, having teacher conferences, and meeting with parents, and those types of things. So I, I think we have to do something about that, and, you know, I'm not sure if that's reflected in the budget, but I think that's important. The other thing I'm very passionate about also is our athletics. My kids have both been participating in athletics, and it's both added value to their, their career. I would ask most of us that have participated in sports, I graduated years ago, and I can tell you that if you ask me to remember who my ninth-grade English teacher was, I might have a little challenge, but I could definitely tell you who my sports coaches were. So these have long-lasting effects on our students, so please consider what Ms. Jingeris presented regarding stipend pay for our coaches. The level of sacrifice they make, along with the rest of our teachers, is extraordinary. Oftentimes, these kids playing sports is what keeps their grades up, keeps them out of trouble, provides them immeasurable opportunities throughout their lives. We should be at the very least competitive with other school districts, especially considering that we are providing extra funding through participation fees. Attract and retain, I think, should apply to our coaches, as well as our teachers. And then finally, I would just say that our teachers are not overpaid. Our teachers are missionaries within our, within our schools. They have not entered into this profession to become wealthy, I think everybody knows that, but to think that they're overpaid is, is just, is just incorrect. So thank you for your time.
Ms. Garino? We don't usually engage the public in discussion on their comments.
Right, I, I just want to thank, I just want to thank Mr. Scolera for those comments. Got your name correct, last name? Yes. My son graduated in twenty-seventeen from Nashua High South. My daughter is currently a sophomore at Nashua High South, so, just like Mr. Scolera, I, I, I have had some very positive experiences. So you can say that I'm a satisfied, happy customer with, with the Nashua school system, but not all families in Nashua have the experience that, that our, our families have had, and that's because of the barriers to learning. And we, we've been hearing, and I haven't forgotten what, what some of the teachers have said, and, and some of the presentations, where, where they have told us about families that, that, that suffer from trauma, that, that suffer from things that are going on in our city. And, and so, I, I just wanted to tell Mr. Scolera that I hear you, when, when you say, you know, let's, let's, let's articulate what the needs are to the Board of Alderman. Let's articulate what the, what the true needs are to them, instead of just shooting for a number. So thank you very much.
I guess we have no other members of the public here, other than our friendly writer from the Nashua Telegraph. So with that, um, I, I'm, just let me throw this out to the board and ask a question. I am not inclined to start going through the budget items with our little auction that we conduct, for two reasons. Mrs. Raymond, and the person who's going to be elected about a week and a half from now. So to that extent, I would, you know, but we still have, that would be a vote, right? But I would like to have a discussion, and I would like to begin to accepting the budget from the superintendent. We have to go do a formal acceptance of the budget, the board has to essentially accept it to work on it, at which point we go through all these deliberations, and eventually we vote. If you want to start that tonight, we can do that. If you want to wait until at least Ms. Raymond is here for next week, I don't have a problem with that. I, you know, she's duly elected, and I think her voice should be represented. So I'm just asking for some feedback from other members of the board, and what they would like to do. Ms. Timmons?
I just want you to let, just let you know, next week I will not be here, so I won't be at the budget meeting next week. However, I can't-
Can you, can you dial in?
I can't dial in.
I mean, phone in, rather.
Yes, I can phone in, and I will do just that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. So anybody else have some input? Thank you for that.
Well, I would like-
Mrs. Oden, oh, Mr. Moser.
Yes. I would like to say, I think it's a good idea that we put it off for the, for the week, so that we can review the facts and then, and vote intelligently. I also have a comment on our speakers tonight, that, though I don't agree with everything that they said, but, if you listen carefully, whoever is speaking, you oftentimes find nuggets of wisdom that may come forth. And if you don't listen, you may, you may miss them entirely. And I think that anybody who comes in as part of the, the public, who, who listen to our presentation, that if they have a comment, or comments, that we should listen, and look for those nuggets of wisdom, and be able to put them to good use. Thank you.
Mrs. Oden?
I agree with you that it, it would be prudent to wait for the other Ms. Raymond, and I believe the special election is next Tuesday, and maybe we could have Attorney Bolton here next Wednesday to swear in the new member. Okay, thank you.
Let's see, Mr. Garino, do you want to weigh in on this?
I, I agree with Mrs. Oden.
Okay, Mrs. Hoence.
I, I have no problem waiting. Could we use this time to ask questions, still?
Absolutely, we're here, we're assembled. Let me just check in with Ms. Van Twyver, I don't want to leave anyone out. My, my back might be to you, but I am always going to look in your direction.
Well, thank you, sir. I'm willing to wait.
Thank you, as am I, that's why I brought it up. I, I think we do better when we have all of us here. So, I guess, so with that, if Ms. Hoence, you suggest you have a question, I'll ask you if you have a question.
Yes, I just wanted clarification for the I-RAD test. Are we, in this budget, are we budgeting for kindergarten or ninth grade, or are those still out of the budget? It's still grades one through eight?
It's just what we have this year, which I don't believe we have those two grades.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have a question? Okay, so what I would like to do is, I had sent administration some questions, Mr. Donovan was kind enough to hand the board tonight those questions with some answers, and what I would like to do is just share this information with the public, so they have an idea, because I think you'll, you'll see that there, there are some important considerations, I think, these questions bring forward to the board. The first question was actually answered earlier this evening, my, Mr. Donovan, when I had asked him about the special ed and the five point nine million, and he mentioned the four, the seven hundred thousand would be paid for largely, at least a four hundred thousand dollar chunk, he thinks he can use the special revenue fund, and the three hundred thousand, he does his magic and kind of finds things. So that was the first question. My next questions had to do with the TIA people, and I honestly don't recall, I think, I know they, they're technology instructors, they're not really considered teachers, but they teach, they just don't do lesson plans, if, if I, if my recollection is correct. So they're not part of the teachers' union, they are part of the unaffiliated. Thank you, Mr. Donovan, for the head shakes, it's really helping me quite a bit here. So what I had done was asked Mr. Donovan, Dr. Mosley, what their range of pay or their hourly rate was, which was eighteen dollars and twenty-six cents, up to twenty-one dollars and seventy cents. And my second question was, when was the last time they received a salary increase? And the information provided by Mr. Donovan was September of twenty-seventeen. So that would have been the last con, well, coincident with the last teacher's contract. They got a raise at that time?
Well, they got a raise for this school.
From the unaffiliated, raised, they received that? Okay. So my question is, has to deal with that, and the next, okay, let me save that question. So I asked the same question for our lunch monitors, and their daily rate, daily hourly rate, sorry, hourly rate, is eleven dollars and fifty-five cents, and it was September twenty-sixteen when they last received a raise. And then the crossing guards, their current hourly rate, and these folks are great, you have to realize, folks, they go out for about an hour, an hour, maybe have an hour in the morning, and an hour at the end of the school day, and they're hopping in and out of cars and adjusting their life to our bus schedule, essentially. So we thank them for what they do. The last time they received a raise, based on this information, was in September twenty-sixteen. So, my question to, I guess, Mr. Donovan, Dr. Mosley, is, do we have any planned raises for the, these three different groups of people, the TIs, the lunch monitors, and the crossing guards, in your budget proposal?
Yes.
Okay, and that would all be wrapped up into whatever the number is for the unaffiliated?
Exactly.
Okay, so the crossing guards come out of the unaffiliated?
Yes, they do.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, so the good news is, I had also asked, having now looked at the answer, I asked if there were any other positions that have not had a pay increase, or that do not have a pay increase in the superintendent's budget, and the good news is, no, everybody's been accounted for. So, thank you, I just wanted to ensure that we were doing that. I had some questions about non-athletic coaches, and mentors, and advisors, and Mr. Donovan noted that head teachers at the Millan High Schools, total, so these are their subsidies, subs, stipends relative to head teachers? So you have, how many are there? There's a whole bunch, right? Because they're each subject matter experts, essentially, and each of the disciplines in each of the schools, so there's quite a number of people.
There's probably about thirty or so.
And those amounts of stipend are contractual obligations?
They're contractual, and they're typically about eighteen hundred, fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred for most of the head teacher stipends.
Thank you. So that's contractual, so we don't have to worry about that?
Right.
Okay. And thank you also for- Okay. And thank you also for the itemized list of the various organizations. And for the public who probably doesn't have a copy of it, most of these are athletics-related. The two that Ms. Johnson mentioned about the School Board Association and for the principals, they go to support staff. So the athletic, the athletic fees, memberships were required. If we're gonna have a specific type of athletic program, we need to pay the fees, pay to play, as it's kind of known here. The others, and I would tend to agree with Ms. Johnson, I would rather see money go into the classroom. For example, that discovery software, $70,000. I would rather see us get that back in the budget than contribute to, to, I'll just say it this way, to non-academic-specific spending. That really covers the questions I had. I did have some questions about Mr. Markou and the budget, and Mr. Donovan answered that with his response to Mrs. Johnson. So that kind of, so to Mrs. Hoence's point, oh, does anybody else have a question?
I do have a question. I have two questions. One, Ms. Johnson that was here seemed to have this information on Adam Markou, and that's why we were able to cover it so indefinitely. It's the same information that's on this, and I was wondering, does she have this prior? This information prior?
Well, I sent it to the whole board, which we've made it a public document, but I did not share, I didn't know what she was gonna talk about. So if you're asking me, did I give her that? Absolutely not.
I disagree with her anyway. Secondly, this information, your questions, is public information?
Yes.
Okay, so why do we, why are we covering this over again?
So if I may answer your direct question. I wanted to make sure that for these three groups of people, the TIAAs, the lunch monitors, and the crossing guards, I wanted to make sure we gave our teachers a 3.6% salary increase. We're in the midst of negotiations with five other unions. Those folks are all gonna get a raise.
Hopefully, hopefully, yes.
At some, I can guarantee at some point in time, they will get a raise. It will be retroactive, and the, and the show will move on. You'll notice that two of these groups of people haven't had a raise in two years, and another group was just last year. So I just want to make sure we're taking care of everybody. That's the reason for this, because it's not easy to find this in the budget. I see a hand from Mrs. Hoence.
Just as a follow-up to your question, it just occurred to me, if they're all unaffiliated, why would two of the groups get a raise two years ago and one of the groups get a raise one year ago? Wouldn't all the unaffiliated get it at the same time?
Typically, that happens. The crossing guards received a significant increase two years ago. So we skipped them this time through, and significant, I'm talking about 40%. So we basically said, let's just, and the reason for doing that was to try to see if we could help get more crossing guards. The, the rate for a crossing guard is fine. That's not a bad rate. The problem is, they don't have enough hours. So they don't make that much money because they don't work enough hours. It's, most of the shifts are less than one hour long. So that's, that's the problem we had with that, so we kept that out. As far as the lunch monitors, I'm not 100% sure why they didn't get one. I, I didn't purposely do that. I'm not sure if anybody did. It probably just, when the list was put together, they just may not have been put on the list when it was approved. I'm guessing. I don't 100% know why, but typically, they get one.
Do you have a follow-up?
No, thank you.
So they are in the budget this year?
Yes.
Well, whatever the unaffiliated increase will be, they will, these three groups of, well, at least, I don't know, I guess that's a discussion we'll have to have. At least the TIAAs and the lunch monitors might, would be in it, and it's.
Typically, what we do is we.
Still to be determined on the crossing guards?
Typically, we bring a list to, to the HR committee. We said, here's the unaffiliated, here's the suggested raise, the HR committee approves it, and that's what happens. So that's the process for nonaffiliated.
Okay, so when we get that recommendation list from the, to the HR committee from the administration?
Yes.
One of us should ask the questions. Is everybody on here, just as a check?
That would.
Okay, that would be the best way to handle it?
Yes.
Yeah, because we don't want not to give these folks what everybody else is getting. We, we want the equity across the district. Does, does anyone else have any questions relative to the budget for tonight? I see none, based upon our previous conversation. I'll entertain, Mr., let me just check in with Mr. Mosher to see if he has anything. Mr. Mosher, you have anything before we wrap up?
Well, I, I had in my mind about the crossing guards and the lunch monitors, but that has been answered, so I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Odin?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second, invited Mrs. Hoence. Can you, can you please give us a roll call, Mr. Guarino?
Okay, on the vote to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Odin?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hoence?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. The motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
At 8:22? 2:00. Thank you.